Okay. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Workshop with the members of the City Commission of Fort Lauderdale and the fabulous Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee. Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for being here and taking time out of your day to be part of this. So I just have to make this one announcement just for the folks needing to hear this through the Internet. The City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting commission meetings in both a virtual and in-person format, including our workshops. So for additional information on how to view the meeting, please visit www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings. I guess you'd already have to be on there to hear what I'm saying, but...
It's just confirming.
Okay. But to help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. What happened to all my guidelines? Please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, destructive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Do you hear that, Commissioner?
Nice, that's all.
Be nice. Okay. All right. So today we have our joint meeting, and it's really a long time coming, and I thank you all for being here today. We have a few milestones that this city should be very proud of. As you all know, the seven-and-a-half-mile force main sewer line is now complete. And when are we having the official ribbon cutting? Sometime in the next week or so, is it not?
September 30th.
September 30th, so in two weeks.
And where will that be? The beginning or the end?
I don't know.
In the middle?
In the middle, okay. I don't know, okay.
All things happen in District Two. Let's do it right.
Oh, by St. Demetrius. A holy place. Been there a few times. Maybe I can get the priest to give the blessing. In the meantime, I've noticed, as you all have noticed, the tremendous amount of infrastructure work that goes on in the city that's not reported on. And I want to thank our city staff, our Public Works, our City Manager's Office, and everybody who's involved with that, especially the patients of our neighbors and business owners who continue to suffer the inconvenience but knowing that this is to maintain the sustainability of our infrastructure and to be able to accommodate the growth that we see happening in our city. So having said that, I turn the chair, the floor over to the Chair of our Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee, Marilyn Mamano. Is your, is my on? Push it once. Is the red, is the red light on?
Nope. I'm holding. Good, thank you. Oh, hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon to talk about infrastructure. I'm going to very, read very briefly and quickly through my statement so that it gives you the context for the meeting and gives the members of the audience the context for the meeting.
Do you want to take, you want to take attendance of the advisory board first?
Yes, I believe we need, we need to take attendance of the advisory board. It is an official meeting, yes.
I have it, Marilyn, if you, you want me to?
Please.
Peter Partington, Vice Chair.
Here.
Shane Grabaski.
Here.
Charlie Ladd.
Here.
Roosevelt Walters.
Here.
Michael Marshall, not present. Ralph Zeltman.
Here.
Jackie Scott.
Here.
Marilyn Mamano, Chair.
Present.
Jerry Angeli.
And maybe we should do the attendance of the Commission.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Absent.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Here.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Here. Okay, now.
Good, thank you very much. All right. The mission of the Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee is to review all the components of the city's infrastructure and make recommendations to the City Commission regarding repairs, replacements, funding sources, financing alternatives, and to receive input from the public. The ITFAC will sunset on February 18, 2022, coming up. At this, our third joint meeting workshop, we would like to get Commission feedback and accomplish the following. We'd like to briefly review the recommendations to date, discuss the material we have reviewed in our current efforts, get feedback on the best use of our remaining time, and start the post-February 18, 2022 discussion. Progress to date, the Infrastructure Task Force was established in March of 2017, extended to 2020, reconstituted as an advisory committee, and extended to February 18, 2022. At that time, the City Commission, I'm talking now 2017, at that time, the City Commission and the public acknowledged that insufficient attention, planning, and funding had been devoted to all types of infrastructure, and that that had to change. The city and state entered into a consent order regarding the sanitary sewer system, specifying physical improvements and planning efforts that needed to be done by 2026. The city passed a $200 million bond to accomplish that. We supported, and the city passed, a $200 million Parks Bond and a $100 million Public Safety Building Bond. The city and the state entered into a consent order regarding the potable water system, and that work is underway and may necessitate additional funding. Planning and implementation of Phase II of the Stormwater Master Plan is ongoing and will be funded by increased user fees and future bonds. The five-year capital improvement plan is funded by user fees from the Enterprise Fund, borrowing in the form of bonds, money from the city budget, and other non-city sources such as the transportation Certac funds, grants, state and federal sources. Most infrastructure projects are designed, built, and operated and maintained by the city. An alternative to that is public-private partnerships. These partnerships don't provide additional funding per se. They are a way to secure specific project expertise, expedite project completion times, and lower costs, typically because the private partner is not bound by the many legal, contractual, or policy positions of the government partner. A carefully crafted P3 agreement can result in cost savings on individual projects, reducing the cost to the city that will have to be provided through user fees or direct payments. In Appendix Three is a list of the various plans, programs, and funding mechanisms that we reviewed, commented on, and monitored during our mission. A list of all our communications to the Commission is in Appendix Four. Appendix Eight is the report on the public workshop. Our first interim report in October 18 made four recommendations: phasing out the ROI, revising, revisiting, and increasing on automatic pilot the impact fees for sewers and also parks, set aside 7% to 10% of capital allocation from property taxes to broader infrastructure needs, and support new stormwater fees to equitably fund the $200 million bond for the Phase II Stormwater Management Plan. Just as an aside, you accomplished three out of the four. Congratulations. But we did not get around to working on the number three recommendation, which was setting aside a specific capital allocation from property taxes to broaden infrastructure, to broader infrastructure needs. Perhaps we'll talk a little bit more about that later. In the summer of 2020, we were asked to review a P3 approach to building the new water treatment plant, and we made a recommendation, also in the appendices. In March of 2020, you gave us a new mission: to evaluate and provide a recommendation on the feasibility and impact of implementing a moratorium on the acceptance of an application for the issuance of a development permit. We explored the legal issues, the comprehensive plan requirements. We reviewed the current implementation of the audience regarding the review of projects, record-keeping, developer requirements, and capacity. In July of 2021, we recommended the following: that capacity at the treatment plant is not an issue at this time, that the condition of the system is being worked on over time, but the condition of the system is still a problem in the DRC process. And we recommended that you institutionalize condition as a part of the review process, either in ordinance or administratively. And we can talk more about that. Actually, that was one of your requests and concerns. Currently, we are monitoring the progress on, and I could read the whole list, but for the sake of time, I won't read the whole list. We are monitoring a lot of things. So in summary, in 2017, the city, since 2017, the city has made impressive progress in addressing infrastructure needs. We attribute this to the increased focus of our elected officials, our advisory boards, and the general public. Their support for the infusion of hundreds of millions of dollars in bonds and rate increases to repair, replace, and plan for infrastructure needs has been critical. Enough can't be said for the dedication and the effort of the city staff and all departments in this pandemic, in these pandemic conditions. Public Works especially has been overseeing multimillion-dollar projects, carrying out consent orders and planning new projects. Based on the planning work required by the consent orders, we now have a better understanding of our water and sewer systems. And with the asset management system, which was also required by the consent order, we have a methodology to adequately maintain them over time. What we would really like is your input today. We would like you to discuss instructing the staff to administratively review condition as a part of the development review condition. That was our recommendation, but it has not been implemented at this time. And we would like to support the Budget Advisory Board and our previous recommendation on the allocation of a percent of capital funds towards capital projects, tax funds towards capital projects. And what should we be doing post-February 2022? Should we review and comment on large P3 projects? Should we continue monitoring plans and executions? What is your view? What do you need from us? What do you think we can do to you to value it?
Praising us, that's fine.
Yeah, you do good, you get praised. That's, that's the way it works. So that's the, that's my brief statement. And I, before we go any further, I do want to give a shout out to all of the members of my committee who have been sitting through these marathon meetings. They go three, four hours. I'm very focused on very deep and, 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 deep, I'll just go with deep, deep stuff. And also the members who have been previously on the committee and are no longer with us, they contributed their, their share of expertise and effort to this. So thank you all. I couldn't, none of us could do this without you guys.
Does, is anyone from the committee would like to make any statements?
Oh, and the staff. We went through a lot of staff, let me tell you. We worked them very hard.
Thank you.
So, thank you to the staff.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I would like...
Is there anyone from this, anyone from the advisory committee, have any comments you'd like to add?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Peter.
I just wanted to emphasize the, the task you set us with respect to the moratorium. And though we did pass a unanimous resolution that a way should be found to put into the ordinance an examination of the condition of the infrastructure. And I'll just leave it at that. I can explain the reasoning behind that. I understand that there are some problems with that, I'm aware of that, but I can explain the reasoning that went behind that unanimous resolution.
Okay, go ahead.
To my way of thinking, infrastructure condition is going to be an ongoing problem. We all understand the age of the infrastructure.
Peter, let's, let's change that thinking. It's not an ongoing problem. It's an ongoing challenge, an ongoing opportunity. We are on track to, we, it's a problem when we don't accept, we don't accept the situation. We accept it, we're starting to deal with it, and we're starting to make efforts towards it. So...
I, yeah, I, yes, I absolutely agree with that, Mayor, as far as the current commission is concerned. But you have to remember that you're not going to be around forever as Commissioner, and that there will be other Commissioners that come along. And my sense is that when you see applications for development, you should see associated with that how it impacts the condition of the infrastructure on which it is placing load. And although staff can be instructed to do that, if it's memorialized in the ordinance, then the public have a right to see that. And I'm not thinking so much of this commission, I'm thinking well into the future, because I agree with what you just responded to me.
So, Chris, don't we, don't we get, like, capacity reports on the, the impact on the water, water treatment plant? And don't we, don't we usually, don't we usually talk about the impact to the piping to and from a new, tell us a little bit about the procedure there today.
So maybe there's, maybe we're splitting hairs, maybe we're not, but I think there's two different things at play here. One is the actual capacity of the plant, and the other is the actual condition of the system.
Right.
And what's being talked about today is condition of the system. And that's not something we currently look at, because I believe, and I think our city attorney will also say that, you know, the condition of the system is up to our responsibility, not necessarily onto a developer's responsibility who may want to develop in the city. That we can look at capacity for sure, because if, if we can't, if we can't treat what they produce, then the system has to be brought to capacity or the project not move forward. But that we can't have an aging system and all of a sudden wait for a development project to show up in hopes that the condition is bettered because we're able to, to change to new infrastructure as a part of the development project. I'll let Alan talk a little bit further than that, but I think there's, I think there's a little bit of some legal challenge with us using condition as an assessment with a project. We do today look at capacity, and what you're used to seeing as a capacity letter.
Right. And, and we also, don't we also have an ongoing project of the, of looking at INI and trying to rehabilitate a lot of the, 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 the systems that are going in and, in and out of the sewage treatment?
Absolutely. We all know that INI is our, the more that we fix, the more capacity we get back in the plant. And we don't have to make a bigger plant, we just need to, to
reduce the amount that flows.
Reduce the amount that flows.
Correct. Because of rain and all that other stuff, seepage and stuff like that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Jackie wants to illuminate further on that issue.
Sure.
He was going to give you a mic.
We're getting you a mic, Jackie.
You get your own mic.
Not that you need a mic, but we're getting you a mic.
Thank you. I, I totally agree with the issue regarding condition. You know, this not only comes up, this comes up at the Planning and Zoning Board level. You know, when we're approving or evaluating a project, we never know what the condition is, and it's always a concern. And I don't think anybody on our board has a problem. I think we all realize capacity is fine. But we'd really like to be able to determine what the condition is or how we can work this into the ordinance so that it can be something reported. And, you know, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Capacity's not the issue.
Yeah, I want to agree with...
City Manager.
The City Manager, yes, that we do not believe that you can hold up a project on condition. We do not, that is not our recommendation. We are not recommending that you hold up a permit on the condition. What we are recommending is that either administratively or in the ordinance, those, those letters that you get says BBBB, capacity, the next paragraph says condition. You're not holding anything up, but we're giving you information. And again, Peter is correct. It's not just for you. You guys are on top of it. You've been living this. But, you know, three years from now...
Hey.
Hey. Who knows, okay? You could be president three years from now.
Already, I'm shivering.
The point, the point of the matter is, we need our decision-makers to have information on which to base a decision. And it seems to us perfectly reasonable that within that same development review process, there could be some discussion about when you approve this project, yes, there's capacity, but you should be aware that there is a pump station that needs to be repaired. It's in the budget, but it's not done yet. There's a, a new, a new force main. That is not even in the budget yet, but it will be in the budget, we swear, we promise. So it's that kind of discussion, just to give you the additional information so that, you know, you're aware of it, the public's aware of it, the Planning and Zoning Board's aware of it. And then if you get three of these letters that say, you know, the last three that you just did, there's a, you should be telling the staff to, you know, why aren't you focusing on this? Why doesn't this raise up to a priority? Is there something we should be doing that we're not doing? So I agree with Chris and the city attorney that this is not...
Preconditioned.
A precondition for the development permit for all the good reasons that they...
Per se.
Yes.
But, but to their, sometimes, and more often than not these days, most developers come to the table saying, we'll do this. So, so the, so it's out there, you know, they're, that's part of, you know, their incentive that they present to the Commission to try to get, get our approval without our asking. So that's been helpful. That hasn't always been the case.
If, if that, if that was, if the condition was part of that report, I think everyone would feel much more comfortable. I don't think we want to penalize developers or necessarily try to slow projects down. But as you just said, Mayor, a lot of times those step up. And I just think that would, that would be putting us in a good direction for our infrastructure.
Well, Roosevelt, can you hand, can you hand it to Roosevelt?
Thank you, Mayor and Chair. When we, when we talk about condition and what is need be reported, should not be a snapshot of now. Just like we estimate the life of the pipeline, we should also be able to estimate the condition of the pipeline with added capacity. Because what we can put through the pipe now because of their condition, if we add another $2 million gallons, would it handle that tomorrow? So the, the, the report should reflect not only today, but in the future, however far you decide it should reflect.
Well, Alan.
So Chris and Alan, can this, can we make this part of the evaluation?
Yeah, can we? Well, you...
Not a precondition, but evaluation.
Well, that's, that's, we're saying it's not a precondition, but in a sense it is because it's already been said that we want to provide you information for you to make a decision on it. So it really doesn't belong in the DRC process. Obviously, staff can give you a report that would be independent of the DRC process, that would provide you the same information. But inevitably, if it's part of the report that is also included with capacity, you could never act on it. So if you get a bad report about the conditions, you couldn't deny that project because of the conditions of the pipe or the infrastructure. So you're sort of mixing in and sort of laying the groundwork for a developer to say, and this used to happen with neighborhood compatibility years and years ago, when we were defending those cases where it was clear there was opposition to a project, and everybody would use neighborhood compatibility. So if, if here, for example, if it's included in the report, but it's not called for in the ULDR, it's extra, you know, extraneous information that can be used to justify not granting a project. And it really, again, it's great to have the information, the information should be provided to you, but not part of the DRC process, because then you're really muddying the waters as to what is really, you know, you get into quasi-judicial conditions and review as to what, what really are you relying upon as a body when you're evaluating. It should only be what's in the published criteria, not any of this additional information. Because, and then there's other factors also that, that there's, part of the problem too is, yes, it's being poised differently here with just... yes, it's being poised differently here, which is, we're just gonna give you a report and don't act on it. But the problem is that you, if you're doing it through the DRC process, you are attributing it to either the increased capacity or that particular development. So you would have to literally, you'd have to show that the development directly and proportionally impacts the infrastructure in a way that basically would cause it to fail. So essentially, you'd have to show that this development would be the straw that broke the camel's back, because otherwise, if there's any failure in the system thereafter, who's to say it's a new development?
Well, so, so it begs the question, can we make it part of the development review process by ordinance?
I don't believe so, because there's no way to really quantify or qualify it. So let's say you have a new development and your, your infrastructure's aging, we take a look at it to the extent we can, because we're not going to dig up every time that there's a new development, but we make certain conclusions and assertions that we think the system's this old and that old. You're now inevitably conditioning approval on the age of the system for which this developer has nothing to do with, right?
I understand that, but, but this is the point.
They don't have anything to do with the capacity in terms of directly improving it.
But that's quantifying. So if I, if I can only, if I can only handle 50 million more gallons, and you're going to produce 75, that's quantifying.
Right.
If I pump more water, if I have capacity and I'm pumping more into your system, how do you quantify or qualify the fact that that increased capacity, which is still within our capacity, will have any bearing on the condition of the infrastructure?
Okay.
There's no, that's just, we're gonna take it-
Oh, I'm sure. Engineers can qualify the impact of increased flow on the condition of pipes?
Yeah, you're, you're not, you're not going to be able to dig up that entire line down the street to figure out whether, you know, X amount more capacity is actually going to fail. We don't know when these pipes are going to fail, and we, and there's so many variables that there's no way to really determine that. So, and I'm saying, this, therein lies the problem, because you're going to have a developer come up and say, well, I want to build here, you have capacity, but then we turn around and say, well, you know, the pipes are really old, so we really don't want you to do this. You, you have no way of qualifying, quantifying that in a legal fashion, where they can't turn around and just, because it's not part of your criteria, first of all, but even if you make it as part of your criteria, how is staff going to determine what the impacts are on the infrastructure? Because in one area, it may be because it's 50 years old or 55 years old, the other one may be because it's closer to the water, it has more salination or whatever else, whatever they call it. There's so many variables that you have to look to, staff wouldn't be able to quantify that in any way that would be defendable in court.
Welcome to our world. These are the discussions we've been having for a number of, of months now. Charlie?
But Alan, don't they have to qualify from, from a capacity standpoint, from that building all the way downstream to the, you know, waste treatment facility? I mean, so you have to, there's a multitude of factors they have to evaluate doing capacity.
Right, but that's a hard number, that's a hard number.
Exactly. I am sure, and you're saying engineers can't get to a kind of, a finite evaluative response as to the impact?
Because you're dealing with capacity of your water treatment plant, not the pipes necessarily. So you have no way, unless you dig up that entire pipe for that entire, all the way to, to Five Ash, you don't know where the weakness is in your system.
Oh, no, no, Alan, that's, we're doing that right now, we're evaluating, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're doing a full evaluation of our entire infrastructure by evaluating, what's the condition of the pipes, what's the age, what's the material, so forth. Chris, right, we're doing this entire process for the whole city, right?
All right, let's assume, let's assume that we're doing that.
Wait a minute, Peter.
So if you have a development here downtown, okay, and then just short distance from Five Ash, you find that there's a weakness in your system, okay, which is fed off by a variety, not just this building or this one line, but a variety of points that are feeding into that. You can't hold up this developer because your system is old or compromised based on citywide usage down the line.
Right, but that's why we're not saying we're holding them up, we're not making this a condition, we're just doing an evaluation.
Then that's fine, you can do an evaluation, but not part of the DRC process.
But Alan, aren't, isn't part of the DRC process staff making very, and correct me if I'm wrong, but staff making very subjective suggestions in the DRC process, like the, the skim of that building, we would prefer this, or we'd like this color or this type of material, isn't that kind of, aren't those suggestions made in the DRC process?
That subjectivity is built into the code, so for example, architectural style, things of that sort, that, that, those, that scope or that flexibility is already built into the code for them to be able to do that. Here, it's completely different.
Okay, Charlie, then we'll go back to Peter Partington. I, I think this whole discussion kind of gets us exactly to where we need to be. It's not a question of a DRC or not a DRC, it's a question of being informed about the condition of the system so that we all keep it in the front of our minds and act on it. And as a city, we don't do well at that. We've sat in these committee meetings for hours poring through the reports, and it's a massive, complicated system worth, I don't know, billions of dollars to replace in the end. Nobody can easily, you guys sitting up here can't easily comprehend it, the DRC doesn't, the DRC members don't easily comprehend it. I think what the DRC highlights is that every effort should be made to continue to focus on the system and identify where we've had successes and identify where we have potential failures. We've, we've got great things that we've done as a city in the last two or three years that I would bet you that you couldn't find 50 people that could really tell you that Victoria Park has been completely rebuilt from the, from the screws up. Huge, you know, all the streets have been repaved, they've been re, re, you know, re, relined, you know, new line, park pavement markings, new sewer, new water, every single water meter's been reconnected to the new system. Massive, massive undertaking that's changed that neighborhood, and it's happened in multiple other neighborhoods. I live in Victoria Park, so I know, but I don't know what other neighborhoods are done. And both positive and negative, I think what we're trying to say about the DRC process is that we as a city, both the constituents and the staff and, and the leaders, we probably need to make more effort to understand where we are, what's been done and what our, our future challenges are in upgrading the system. Whether, so I don't know, personally, I don't think the DRC process is the best way to do that, but we need to figure out how to do that so it doesn't get sloughed off 10 years from now with a different group that say, hey, we can put this off. We learned our lesson the first time, you guys brought home that lesson, and we're fixing it, and we just want to stay focused so that we can keep identifying the parts that need to be fixed. Okay. Peter?
And I just wanted to say that your consultants, Hazen and Sawyer, have done a lot of work already on condition for the sewer system and the force main system, and they've basically categorized the vast majority of that system into three categories, low likelihood of failure, medium likelihood of failure, and high likelihood of failure. So a lot is already known about the condition of the sewer and force main system, and that work is continuing on the water lines. And again, to echo what Charlie said, I just see this, this information of the condition on which development is placing load as a way of keeping this, the condition issue to the forefront in future, future years and future commissions.
So, Peter, how would we, how would we quantify in a subjective, in an objective way, objective way, the status of the underground infrastructure and incorporate it into the decision-making process going forward? Because, you know, the community looks at us and says, how dare you approve a new building when the condition underneath the ground is so dilapidated that we can't even, we, you know, this gonna, it's gonna put more pressure on the system as it exists, and, and you're being irresponsible for not asking that question and incorporating it into your decision-making. I think that's a fair question.
Well, yes, the, the way I envision it working is that you would have a report that says this, this development puts X amount of load onto these lengths of pipe, and they are variously rated between A and B and B and C, low likelihood of failure and high likelihood of failure. And yes, I agree, it would not be necessarily comfortable for a future commission to be sitting there with a development that is putting load onto a hot, a pipe that has been categorized as a high risk of failure, but it would just have to be explained, at least the public would understand that, and it would have to be explained that the, the application could not be refused because of that, but everybody is aware of that situation. It's bringing these situations into the public that I'm concerned about, so it doesn't get lost because it is literally underground.
Well, we, we had a situation that came up last year when we were contemplating the approval of the Hilton Hotel, I think it's in your district, District 2, right, just right near where you live, right? On 30th, was it 29th Avenue, 29th Street?
Homewood Suites on 30th, 30th and A1A.
Yeah, 30th and A1A. And I remember when our previous Public Works Director was here, before he was our Public Works Director, he was the consultant used by the developer to discuss just this very subject. And, and there was, there was a question as to whether or not there was, the condition of the pipes leading to the, the treatment plant were, were such that building, a new building such as this would, would, would or would not stress the system out. And I believe we came to an accommodation where the developer agreed to, to install several hundred feet of pipe, is that not correct?
Well, actually, it was going to be a joint effort, I believe, with the city, the Homewood Suites, and the Publix across the street.
And the Publix-
They were all going to be part of that.
Chip in, and they were going to fix it.
Right.
Yeah.
That was what the resolution-
So it does, it does become part of, of the debate and the discussion, and, and so how was it that we allowed that to happen, Alan?
That was actually against our advice. Because, well, the, the best that we could make out of it is, one, they voluntarily did it because obviously they wanted their development to be approved, but it was limited to the area that was within just their, their boundaries. Because even I believe the, the former director you spoke of had admitted that just fixing that length of pipe wasn't necessarily going to preserve or guarantee that, you know, 100 yards further down the line, it wouldn't fail. So it was sort of a Band-Aid approach, and we have to be careful when we either expect or it's out there that developers are presumed to come to you with these offers, because then you get into the exactions statute, and we can't, because again, it's not in our code, and then you're asking developers to do some extra things to fix our infrastructure so that they're able to develop here, so we have to be careful there.
So Alan, can we make it part of our code? You're mentioning it's not in our code, so can we make it in part of our code? If we can't make it part of our code, then how can this information be part of just the information that's shared from staff?
Well, the, first, well, the information can be brought to you at any time from staff in any form, you know, that you want, you know, and how in-depth the information you get is, is all up to you, you know, what staff brings to you. My issue is just making it part of the DRC process is, one, if you do add it to your code, there's no unlike capacity, there's no way to really quantify it, and there's no way to attribute it to that particular developer. And keep in mind that developers are already paying an impact fee for this, they contribute into the system so that we can fix our infrastructure, so they're already paying an impact fee. So this would be above and beyond, and then, again, you'd have to be able to, and I don't know how you could, directly and proportionally correlate that nexus between the building and a failure that you think may or may not happen in the future on the line that is contributed to by a variety of other developments, some of which have, are not even close to the geographical area where your new development's going to be. So I don't know how staff even becomes, or are even able to analyze something of that sort when you have a development here, but it affects an entire system.
Mr. Mayor-
Chris, can we ask that question to an engineer to see if they have feedback?
I'm sorry, are you asking if we have an engineer here that could address that?
Yeah, Chris, I was gonna ask, I think Alan raises a great question, could we have an engineer address that and, and tell us if that's possible to evaluate?
Well, Peter's an engineer.
Let's see, go to, I see Abby's on the call virtually, Abby, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Commissioner and Mayor. That's, that's really a, a tough question to determine, and I'm just gonna go a little bit back to 2019 when we had the, the failure on the 54-inch line. So that is on the regional system that takes flow from Oakland Park, Wilton Manor, Port of Tamarack, Port of Davie, and the city of Fort Lauderdale. So if you look at that situation in parallel of this discussion, can we really say that the, the additional flow or the flow stemming from Oakland Park or from Wilton Manor contributed to the failure of that pipe that relies, that lies in Rio Vista about seven or eight miles away? There is no way for any engineer to make an assertion as to what's gonna happen for a pipe there is underground. Keep in mind that under East Master Plan in 2017, we did a evaluation of the force main system. Also, on the consent order, Hazen and Sawyer did an extensive evaluation of the force main system. And all of that information is available to the public, it's out there, these reports are published on the city website. So in that regard, what's been requested, it's already out there in the public domain, whether you put it in a paragraph or you don't, that is, information is out there. And we continue in improving the system as we go. We did a lot of work in the last few years since the breaks that happened, and we continue to invest in the system.
But, but-
Keep in mind, keep in mind that the, the evaluation that Hazen did is mostly a analytical evaluation in the sense that it took the age of the pipe, it took the material of the pipe, and it took how the system is laid out to come up with the determination. There was no destructive, invasive methodology that dug out pipe and say, this pipe condition is X. It was all analytical methodology.
Yeah, but, but, but what Commissioner Sorensen and I are asking is, there has to be some methodology that we can employ in our decision-making that takes into consideration the condition of aspects of our underground infrastructure, because it would be irresponsible if we did not incorporate that kind of component in our thoughts before we approve a project. And then to be told by our city attorney that we can't do it, I think it's, it just seems to me that it runs counterintuitive to our responsibility to the community not to approve new projects unless we know that the infrastructure is not going to be overwhelmed and, and cause it to fail as a result of the building of, whether it be that building or the next building. I mean, you have to understand our situation, our, our responsibility, and to just say, well, we can't do it because, because we can't do it, I, there's, there's never, there's always an answer, and there's always a way to do it, yes.
And then after Ralph, I have some points, Mayor.
Can we-
Go ahead, Ralph.
Can you take the microphone?
Ralph, here you go. You gotta turn it on. Just push the button.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
First, I wanna, I prepared something for this meeting last month, and it kind of goes over, and I'm gonna get, I'm gonna address the developer situation that you're currently discussing, but-
Try to speak into the microphone, because I can barely hear you. Okay.
Let me pass this out first, if I may.
I'll do it, Ralph, while you speak.
Okay, let me-
Ben, we're being passed a sheet of paper which you can't see.
Yeah, Mayor.
Oh, and I see Robert McKenzie's here too, okay, great.
No, I've been here the whole time, but can Ralph go to the podium so that the public can see him on, on screen?
Come where?
The podium over on the side.
All right.
The document's not as important as, as seeing who's talking. The document's not as important as, as seeing who's talking.
Probably don't even need this anymore. Thank you.
Well, can I just say this before you go into this? Uh, this, there is a specific question on the table right now. This, um, this sheet that you handed out, uh, has a lot of really good topics to talk about, but.
Yes, I'm gonna address, I'm gonna address the current topic that we're talking about, the capacity of, of lines that, uh.
Well, we're not talking about capacity, we're talking about condition right now.
Well, the condition.
Right. So where, if you could just point to us where on this paper the condition is spoken about?
Uh.
So that, so we can focus on that.
Actually, this is just a, a quick summation of the various infrastructures, starting with the George C. Lomar wastewater to the Five Ash wastewater, uh.
And again, they're all great topics, which actually I wish you would have brought this up.
And I, and I, supposedly this was gonna be handed out to you, it was handed out to the committee, um, for this, but I wanted to get this in your hands because it's a vital update.
It's in my hand.
Now, as far as, as far as the capacity, um, is concerned relative to condition, let me give you an example. Um, in the fifties and sixties, out on the beach, basically had like six inch diameter and eight inch diameter water mains. And through the sixties and then seventies and eighties, the zoning started to change from a single, uh, family type of development to a multi-family and then the high-density development. And the six and eight inch diameter water mains, um, they were aging, but they also only had a certain capacity that they could deliver. So what has happened is the zoning has changed, uh, tremendously from a single family to a multi-family, and you've got a great deal more, uh, consumption out of your water mains. Uh, eight inch, that was there, say, from the plant, basically. It, uh, it went through transmission and then a distribution main, but on the beach it was an eight inch. Well, there's no way that an eight inch can satisfy and provide the, the capacity of water to all these high-rises that have built up through the nineties and two thousands. So what, and, and as a function of time, these eight inch, let's say, eight inch, uh, water mains, the material was like cast iron. So they, cast iron is susceptible to tuberculosis in the pipe, which is rust. So consequently, the rust starts building up and it starts narrowing the inside of the pipe. And so therefore you're even reducing your, uh, flow capability and capacity. So what's, what should have been done at the time of the rezoning is the fact that you should have said, okay, this eight inch is not going to serve four or five or six or ten times the amount of, uh, capacity that's needed now just for a single family. So you need to put in, for an example, uh, larger mains to, uh, assist the eight inch diameter, the existing eight inch. And, uh, that's, that's where the problem is. And if you put a parallel one in, but, uh, you know, it's like if you put, uh, replace that eight inch with a sixteen inch diameter, you're getting, uh, four times the amount of capacity than, than the original eight inch. And that's what you needed to do or what, what needed to be done, uh, at the beach area. And that just typifies areas that were single-family and then have been rezoned to high-density.
All right, so let me ask you this, just to stick to the subject right now. So are you recommending then that the city of Fort Lauderdale City Commission not approve any additional developments on the beach until we convert to sixteen inch water main?
No, I'm not saying that because.
So what, I'm trying to understand where this is going.
That was just an ar- arbitrary example, but.
Okay. So let me ask you this, was the eight inch water main, uh, installed, you indicated it was installed at the time we had single-family home development. Do you not think that some of that capacity was anticipated, knowing that the beach would grow and there would be further intensive developments? So they like planned for the future, it wasn't just for that moment in time?
Well, there, there certainly, you don't wanna put a two inch in that half, you know?
Right. I have that in my house.
And so you don't leave any, uh, future expansion in development based on, at that time, single-family. Now.
Right, but I mean, we, we, but I think that people at that time were a little forward-thinking and they said, you know, it's more than just single-family. Fort Lauderdale's gonna start building hotels and they're gonna start increasing the density. So they probably did anticipate, but we, we really need to stick to the, to the.
Yeah. Mayor, can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
So I just, I just wanna come back to this condition piece. So Mayor, if I heard Abby right, what I'm hearing is, hey, we are able to analytically effectively evaluate capacity. We're able to, uh, evaluate that, the duration of the system, and, and we as Public Works Department can do that. Additionally, what I'm hearing, Mayor, from, from Abby was, hey, we can, and I, I heard him say, with analytical methodology, we can evaluate the age, material, how the system is laid out, and understand the condition of the system. So not only the capacity, but I heard we can analytically understand the condition. Is, is Abby, it looks like you're shaking your head.
Yes, I mean, what I said, in the process that Hazen and Sawyer utilized to come up with the force main condition assessment, it was an analytical method in the sense, taken into consideration, age, material, consequence of failure, impact of failure. What I'm saying is, there is no way, an engineering way to quantify, say, if I put in X MGD in the system due to this development, we'll break the pipe at location X.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm not suggesting. That's I think.
And, and I don't think there is an engineer on earth who will put his signature and his, his, his license on the line saying that.
Right, right. Absolutely agree. Abby, a hundred percent. And, and Mayor, just maybe for me to clarify what I'm suggesting is, I'm not suggesting that we have a prospective look to say, will the condition deteriorate to a degree which will lead to a possible break in the future? My suggestion, Mayor, is can we have a evaluation of the current condition to say, here is the current condition. It is an A, B, or C. It is made of X, Y, and Z material. Uh, it has these, uh, linkages downstream, just a current condition of the system in addition to a current capacity of the system. It's those two, uh, components. Abby, is that possible?
Well.
It does exist. It's called the force main condition assessment that Hazen has done and published.
Perfect. So Mayor, perfect.
But Ben, we're being cautioned by our city attorney that we're not allowed to include that assessment, uh, in the value, in the determination of whether or not we wanna approve a building or not because, uh, for the reasons that he stated earlier. So I.
But he was stating, Mayor, that we couldn't analytically evaluate the current condition. And what we're hearing is not only can we, but it has been done in the past to analytical, analytically evaluate the current condition of the system.
Actually, that's, that, that wasn't necessarily my point. My point was, well, there's a variety of points, but let's look at it maybe from the, the practical perspective. So let's say you added to your code and say that we're gonna look at the condition of the pipe as, as well as capacity.
Right.
What, what is a yes and what is a no to the developer? At what point do you say, no, you can't? And what point do you say, yes, you can? Because again, are we looking at just one little area? Are we looking at the whole system? Are we, what are we looking at? Are we looking at predicting that there's gonna be a failure? Because that's essentially what you would be doing and saying no to, no to a developer for whatever portion down the entire line that would say, we're gonna predict that there may be a failure, we don't know, we don't know where, but there may be a failure, so you can't build. They have to be, you have to be able to quant- quantify and qualify why you're saying no. And, and with capacity, again, it's easy because you've got hard numbers.
Right.
But here, where's that failure gonna take place? You can, you can have condition all day long, but you don't know that that's gonna fail or what's gonna cause it to fail.
Well, does, does, um, does increased usage, uh, make the, the pipe, the, 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 the pipeline more subject to failure? In other words, Mr. Zeltman is saying that, you know, if you, if this area was built for an eight inch water main and now we're, we're adding hundreds and hundreds of more units, um, that's capacity regardless of condition, and an argument will be made, well, you can't build anything else until you replace it with a increased size water main.
And, and Mayor, if I may.
That's capacity.
That's capacity. So condition, you're talking about how thin the pipe is, that maybe it's rusting on the left-hand side and you've got, you know, some fail, some, some, some potential weakness there and so on and so forth. Very tough to evaluate that unless you dig up your pipes. And then if you do deny a project because of the condition, the challenges are gonna be, okay, what specifically are you denying this for? And we're not gonna be able to say specifically that on pipe A or pipe B, you have this or that, and that's where we're gonna have problems once we're challenged on it.
And Mayor, may, uh, respond?
Sure. Just a minute, Ben.
And you're, and you're right, now. It's a crystal balling effect with the age of the pipe and the amount of, um, corrosion that's accumulated over the decades that, uh, impact, negatively impacts the inside of the pipe, whether you're dealing with a water, you know, and of course, the pipe itself, material, is an important part of the equation. If you've got cast iron, it's more susceptible to rusting. If you've got, uh, obviously PVC, uh, that's an inert thing, you're not gonna have any rust. So there's, there's a lot of variables that have to be identified, including the time of service. And you can estimate, for an example, a cast iron pipe in service with the conditions of, if it's, say, the water that's, uh, for drinking water, then you would say it could be fifty, sixty years just before the rust would come in and create a, a situation where the, it wouldn't be ineffective and it would be subject to failure. Because as the rust starts to, to grow inside, it grows until it can close up, and so the water flow and pressures will diminish as a function of the corrosion over time.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
So, yes, can, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm gonna wait. I've been waiting for an hour to speak.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's, I'm, I'm going to let you speak, Marilyn, but then after Marilyn, may I please be addressed?
Yeah.
I, I was just going to, uh, to take a, a, a point of chairperson privilege, um, and, and acknowledge that everything Alan has said, we have heard and we, we actually concur with him. We are not recommending that this be part of the ordinance. We've been through this. We are only recommending that they, staff sits down and figures out a way to get you the information about the condition of the system that is pertinent to the development application. We're not asking you to stop development. We're not asking you to make the developer pay for anything. You know, you say that the information, the information is out there already. Abby is absolutely right. But every time you see a development permit application or discussing a development, are you gonna go back to the Hazen report and check it out? No, you're not. You don't have time to do that. The staff has gotta figure out a way to get you that information during the review of the application so you can make an informed decision. So let us stop talking anymore about the ordinance and how it can't be done in the ordinance, and let's move on.
All right, well, let's let the vice, let's let the vice mayor speak.
Thank you, thank you, and I appreciate all the comments. I'm actually gonna go in a little bit of a different angle. I believe as a city, the city of Fort Lauderdale, it's our responsibility to fix our water and sewer pipes, which we have been actively working on the past three years. I don't believe it is the responsibility of a developer to fix our water and sewer pipes. It's our responsibility. And we've talked about water and sewer for numerous hours, so I don't think it needs to be in a code, an ordinance, and anything. I think, um, the role of government is water and sewer, city, uh, police and fire, and maybe a little bit in some CIP projects, and parks would be great too. But, you know, uh, beyond that, I, so I'm gonna disagree with you all, and I also say, you know, I.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you. The, the, it's not, and we're not saying that we need to impose this on the developer, but the, the question is, does it become a question as to whether or not we move forward with a development project?
Sure.
The condition is considered, uh, if the condition of the existing infrastructure is inadequate to accommodate the new development.
Sure.
We're not saying that the developer has to pay for anything.
Well, I believe, and like Chris has brought to our attention on numerous occasions, if a pipe is about to break, it needs to be fixed and it's an emergency. I've signed numerous, not signed, but voted on or something, numerous emergency orders to fix pipes, whether they're water or sewer. And I've seen the map that, I looked at it with Raj, and there are different colors of the maps, and I saw red, interestingly enough, one red pipe behind the Galleria Mall. One of the condos was blocking us from actually fixing that red pipe and it broke. So now we're currently fixing it now. So, um, I do think when you see a red pipe, when you look at your district map, you know, check it out and make sure it is on that timeline for getting fixed, but I'm sure our Public Works Department is on that. I'm sure there are priorities and lists because I've, I've seen it, I'm sure you all have. So I believe if something needs to be fixed quickly, we're going to get that information. Am I right, Chris? If something's an emergency and it's about to blow.
If it becomes an emergency, yes.
Well, hopefully we know a little bit. Like, I knew that red pipe behind the Galleria Mall was about to go. The condo was blocking it for whatever reasons and it blew. So I think we have a little bit of a warning before.
And a condo was blocking it.
Well, uh, they wanted to, uh, we had some problems getting onto the property to fix it.
Really?
Really. Uh, yeah, I, listen, we don't have to get into that right now, but my, my point is, yes, we, we, you have about a good year or so, I think, when, before you know. So I hear what you're saying about approving development projects. I think a bigger issue, and Abby alluded to it, we service, how many cities for sewer, Chris? Three for sewer?
Oh goodness, no, it's more than that, um.
Several, I thought, I thought.
I know water is a lot, like.
Five.
Yeah, five.
So we service five other cities, so we have no control over what those cities are approving. So every single development that they're approving, they're running through our pipes.
No, I think we have to submit a, uh, capacity letter to them.
Yeah, but capacity is different than condition, Ben, so, you know, that.
No, but, but you're wrong that we don't weigh in on those. Is that right, Chris? Don't we submit capacity letters?
Capacity's different than condition.
I think each city's a little bit different based upon how we service it with master meters or whether or not it's our infrastructure. I'd have to go to Public Works and let them, uh, identify how we, how we service the different cities. I think they're different.
Let's say, for example, Wilton Station, when that was proposed, did they have to come to us first to determine whether or not that their, that development would not, um, stress out our existing capacity or conditions? I mean, you weren't here then, and I wasn't here then either.
It's my understanding that that happens. I've, I've asked that question a few times with.
Yeah, it's the same situation. I mean, if that's, but the thing is, let's say that, let's say there's a building here in Flagger Village that wants to be built, okay? And it's two miles to George Lomar, right? So let's say somewhere, you know, somewhere in the middle of District Four, there's a weak section or an aging section of the, of the pipe. Do we say, oh, well, when we get to that, then you'll be able to build your building? We're not doing that, right?
Right.
Can I?
Right.
Can I make a modest? Saying that. But yet, but yet.
We should know.
We should know. Can I, can I make a modest proposal?
But hold on, let's just get, Mayor, let's get Abby's answer to this.
Mr. Led, what do you have to?
How about, what's, uh, what's the question, Mayor? Let me simplify this. I think our committee is trying to say, through the DRC process, that's one means to highlight where there are condition issues in our system. There are other ways to do it. Let's make a top ten list of the areas that have the most condition issues and keep it on the forefront for everybody to try to address as soon as possible. There's other ways to do this. I think what we're after, the DRC is a very granular system because, you know, if somebody's going in for a duplex in Coral Ridge versus somebody building a high-rise downtown.
Right, I get that.
It's very granular.
Right.
But really, it's about staying focused on where we have condition issues. And we could just as easily make a top ten list or a top twenty list of the condition issues we need to deal with as a city to keep everybody focused. That's just as easy as doing this DRC process. Capacity and condition are completely different issues.
We understand that.
And I'm not gonna go back into it, I promise.
We understand there's a difference, but at the same time, they become important in our decision.
So, so Mayor, a question, a question for Alan would be, Alan, can this information come before the commission in some formalized process about condition? And inherent in that is it can't be used as a deciding factor whether to approve or deny a project? Is there a way to incorporate that in the overall process of discussing a project?
You can put on paper that you're not supposed to consider it, but when you're in a quasi-judicial situation, if that is provided to you as evidence from staff. in a quasi-judicial situation, if that is provided to you as evidence from staff, you're going to have objections left and right because that's not something you're supposed to consider. So, even that information coming to you in a quasi-judicial setting is going to be a problem.
So, should we allow it to come in? Shall we change the ordinance to at least allow it to come in?
No, because I think, because no, then you can't make a decision based on it. So, if you allow it to come in, no, it's, it's-
Alan, you're not helping the situation.
I know, you're just, you're going to get challenged on it and on sursuary-
Catch twenty-two here.
On sursuary, you're going, you're going to get knocked down.
But we do have a responsibility as a commission to make a decision for any new development based on the condition of the infrastructure in that particular setting.
And you-
I would feel, I would feel irresponsible if I didn't ask the question. And what, what the Vice Mayor is saying, well, look at the map and at least we'll see that whether or not we can, if we look at the map, so maybe the map should be attached to each development application, so at least we can see. But you're saying we're not allowed to see that as evidence.
Not during your quasi-judicial. I mean, independently of that, no, but staff could tomorrow, a week from now, tell you all the critical hotspots that they're aware of. Again, we're not digging these pipes up so we don't know to an exact science.
Zoning be given that map?
And planning and zoning? Sure, they can look at it. But the thing is, unless, even if you publish, first, right now, it's not published, so it's not part of the criteria. Even if you publish it as a criteria, how are you going to publish it as a criteria, right? Practically, okay, we're going to look at the condition of the pipes. Where, how, I mean, it's just, there's no way to really quantify the entire system.
No, but we can at least see, when that building is being proposed, okay, what the conduit looks like between the building and the treatment plan. And, and it's, not just the map-
That, that could be ten miles.
I'm sorry?
That could be ten miles, that could be-
Sure, it's ten miles for capacity.
But no, capacity is your plant. You're not talking about the miles in between.
Capacity has nothing to do with the pipes from the house to the plant?
To a certain extent, it does, but you're booking-
I've heard the exact opposite, wow.
Because if, okay, so let's say that, uh, seven miles down the road, you have what you think is, is a weak, uh, portion of your system. And it's not just one line from here and one line from there, they all kind of feed, I mean, you have to look at it.
Right.
But you're at that point basically saying there's no development on any part of your line.
Right.
Because how do you attribute it to one development and not the other? Where's the proportion? The fact that there's a weak line that's ten miles away from your projected development, that's on us, that's on the city of Fort Lauderdale, that's not on somebody trying to develop on the Barrier Island or somewhere else.
That's what, that's what the Vice Mayor is saying. It's on us. But then it behooves us to recognize the weak, the, the weak link in the, in the chain so that, so that we can schedule it, so that if it is a problem, it's, it's, it's been corrected before the development is completed, so that at least we know that they have, they have both condition and capacity to be able to function as a building.
And I don't disagree, I just think it, it needs to be apart from your DRC and approval process because you're in a quasi-judicial setting.
Great, so how do we make it apart, Alan? How can we build that in somewhere?
You could do that independently with Public Works and, and have, you know, if they, they need to be consulted or, or whatever staff wants to do in order to do that, but it just cannot be part of that approval process.
Oh, excellent, oh, excellent. And thank you very much, and we've, we've been doing this with you and we agree with you. And what we're asking the commission today is to simply instruct the staff to find the way to do this. It, it could be in a separate report, it could be in a semi-annual compilation that we give to them every semiannually. There are ways to do it, but you, you have not instructed your staff to go forward on trying to work with us to find that way. All we're asking for today is if the commission is interested-
Well, it's not enough to me to instruct staff.
Well, that's absolutely correct. So, we are bringing it to the commission and asking the commission to instruct the staff to try and work with us to find a way that does not impact the DRC project, but does provide the information to the commissioners and the planning-
City manager.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, city manager, can we do that? Is that possible to explore?
Yes, Ben, yes, we think we've, we've come to catharsis here.
Oh, let's get on to the next big issue.
Hold on, we didn't get there an hour ago. This was a helpful conversation.
It was very helpful, it was very-
It's an important conversation, the conditions of our pipes matter, and we want to do this a legally appropriate way. So, I'm, I'm feel very good about this discussion.
Yes, it was excellent.
Mayor, I do want to ask one more question for Chris. Chris, you know, I'm, we've all approved a lot of money to spend on water, sewer, and stormwater. Is there anything we can do to approve more money so that we can make things go faster? We can, you know, fix more pipes? I mean, are we doing everything we can, because we keep talking about the conditions of the pipes? I thought we were on track to, you know, fix all of our aging infrastructure in a timely manner. What it seems like I'm hearing tonight is maybe we could do a little bit more, a little bit faster, or is that not possible?
Yeah, so there's a lot at play with, with that question because it's a function of what we're capable of doing at the same time, what we're capable of affording at the same time, and what we're able to take out of service and keep the systems running at the same time while we do the work. And so, yeah, there's quite a balance there. We have, if I look as, if I look at money in the bank as indicator of us having capacity to do additional projects, it's not as though we need more money to do more projects. We need to, I think, as a group, and I've talked with the new Public Works Director about this, finding ways to bundle projects that are like nature and get them out together as opposed to doing them individually. So, I think there's ways to do more within, within the parameters of what we have. So, I think the answer to your question is, we don't need more money, we might be able to work more efficiently than we have been. But again, it also then becomes, since these are functioning systems and functioning utilities, it would be great if we could go out of business for six months and just repair everything and then come back online.
Right, right.
But we can't do that.
Okay, so hopefully, all those red lines that we have seen on some of the maps, you will let us know if something is approaching failure and it needs to be immediately replaced. If not, we're thinking, at least I'm thinking, we're on track for, for fixing the problems that we did identify as problems.
Okay, Chair Mamanu.
Yes, well, I, this, this was wonderful, this was really good. And I hope we have the same, you know, good conversation about our recommendation that we made the, we made three years ago about setting aside a certain amount of the tax, tax, tax money, ad valorem tax money for capital projects. Currently, we do not do that. We, we do the budget, the general budget, and then we put a few capital projects in there, but it comes out of the general, the general budget. And we have been recommending, and we thoroughly support, the Budget Advisory Board, who has also been recommending for a number of years, that there be a separate item for capital projects in the general fund budget. There is the CIP budget, some of the general fund money gets put into the CIP to do projects, along with the fees and the bonds, yada, yada, yada. But when you're actually budgeting, it would be very helpful, we think, in, in terms of not only your, your work, but the public's understanding of your work, that there be an actual line item in the general fund budget for capital projects. And what do you think about that? We, we think that's a very, very good idea and, and-
So, that's the equivalent of living in a condominium.
Yes, and putting a reserve-
And you, you set aside a certain amount of the monthly maintenance for the reserve fund for capital expenditures versus zero amount for a reserve fund for capital expenditures and doing a special assessment every time you need something done, which is what we're doing now.
It's essentially, that is, that is what we do.
Right.
So, Marilyn, the, the question that, or the, the recommendation you just made, is that, would that be a set aside within the existing millage rate levy, or are you talking about a capital projects millage rate levy?
No, within the existing millage rate.
So, it would cause the existing millage rate to go up?
Not necessarily, it depends on who you-
Yes, necessarily. Seven to ten percent? Hello?
All right, we, we went for seven to ten percent, and you know what, that's negotiable. But the point is that, you know, you have, you collect a certain amount of money to run the, operate the, the city.
Yes.
And it, it makes a lot of good sense to the, us who've been looking at this and to the Budget Advisory Board that's been looking at, at this, that there be a separate pot of money in reserve for your capital projects. It does mean, you're absolutely right, that, you know, you have to do a little bit, you have to save a little bit here to put a little bit there, we understand that. But, you know, you need to do that.
I have a comment.
Yes. Jackie, go ahead.
Yeah, I totally agree with this, and when you look at the money that we spend, you know, every year or every couple of years, we have staff raises, we have additional people that get hired. I'm not against any of the police, the firefighters or whatever, but it seems to me that we should be putting money aside for these capital improvements. I mean, I think that's what the people in the city want. They want to see that kind of progress.
Well, the thing is, the methodology that we're using now is, who's complaining about that? I mean, it still gets paid for by the general public.
I think, I think, Mayor, there's a lot of things that neighborhoods and people want done, and there's no money.
Yeah, but-
So, this would be a pot of money-
But Jackie, we don't need a pot of money. We, we need, when, when we ask people to pay for a bond, it's for a very specific project. It's not thrown into the general fund where it gets lost. You know, when we say we're going to float a bond for a hundred million dollars to build a, a, a police, new police station, people know that they're going to get a new police station, all right? When we ask to spend two hundred million dollars for a, for a parks bond, people know that it's going to go right into buying new land or rehabilitating existing parks and so forth. So, they know that exactly where the money's going. If it goes, if we're saying, you know, let's just raise the millage rate so it goes into the general, we're going to have to, because, because seventy percent of our budget goes for police and fire, okay? So, so what are you going to cut there? What are you going to cut there? Because if you're going to go across the board, you're going to cut seven to ten percent of our police and fire budget right off the top. You tell me how we can do that. I can't, I, I don't know, maybe you know better than me.
I think the Budget Advisory Committee has some ideas on how to do that. Can we bring Bill into this conversation?
Well, is this a guest appearance from the Budget Advisory Board?
Exactly.
And, and Mayor, before Brian speaks, I do want to have a point. You're talking about capital projects, I appreciate that. I probably want to know what type of capital projects, because I do believe our water should be paid by user rates because we service other cities. Our sewer should be paid for by user rates. You know, stormwater is probably a little bit different because it's inside of our city. But, so there are certain buckets that I think should come out of those bonds that we're floating and the users are paying back. Maybe if it's a different capital project, I-
We absolutely agree with you on that, that, there's no question on our mind about it. But let's take bridges, for example, all right? Bridges don't come out of user fees, roads don't come out of user fees.
Right.
Sidewalks don't come out of user fees. Those are the kinds of things that there is, that are general, ongoing capital improvements, replacements in the, in the city. Now, not, not maintenance, no, no, not maintenance.
Yep.
So, you know, so for instance, so I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Brian Donaldson, current Chair of the Budget Advisory Board. Let me clear up a couple of things. The, the recommendation from the Budget Advisory Board was not to increase the general fund ad valorem, it was a separate line item for CIP projects. That would be an additional line item, as to the Mayor's point, that the city and the constituents understand that we had a parks bond, that we had a stormwater fee, that we have a two-hundred-million-dollar for water and sewer. So, to the Vice Mayor's point, these were additional CIP projects, which Marilyn just mentioned, which I was going to mention. There are a lot of unfunded CIP projects, and so that's where we were looking at it. So, we were not in, to the Mayor's point, of putting seven or ten percent and cutting our personnel costs. We want a general fund to be run as general fund has been. And then, which we haven't been able to get to at the last couple conference meetings, was a review of all of these different CIP projects that are currently not funded. So, as other cities have done for their infrastructure, they have had a separate additional line item that was put in that did not go into the general fund. So, I just wanted to correct that point.
Okay, we understand that. So, let me ask you this. So, the reason why they're unfunded is because there is no money for them. So-
Exactly.
What is the recommendation, then?
So, our recommendation is, is that because of the fact that due to our ongoing contractual obligations, et cetera, that sometimes come in higher than what we had budgeted, because those are signed off after the budget is approved, which we'll probably be getting this fall, because we're approving the budget tonight, and we don't know what our contracts are for the 2022, even though we have it in the budget. So, what we're saying is, for CIP projects, instead of CIP projects, your predecessors use those as the last item after doing general fund, okay? So, we were kicking the can, kicking the can. This commission has done a great job at being able to fund bonds for water, sewer, for stormwater, for parks, et cetera. So, we're thinking for the future that we need to put into place a separate ad valorem that does not go into general fund, that goes to CIPs. So, that way, when there is a change of commission, that there is a funding mechanism in place that people see as a line item on their taxes that say that these are going for infrastructure, infrastructure that are not user fees like water, sewer, stormwater, that are bridges, that are roads, that are tunnels, that are other CIP projects, seawalls, et cetera, that are not a user fee-driven, which is what we're going to be having to do for our water and sewer and our stormwater. But instead of talking about, so that maybe then we can go to sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years of no increase in ad valorem, but we need to fund CIPs. So, that was our suggestion, not to put it in and then put seven or ten percent, as Marilyn had mentioned. So, I just wanted to clarify that we, that was our preferred, not to increase general fund and ad valorem. So, let's continue to strive toward a sixteen record year of flat, but we need to have a separate line item that everyone understands that we can fund our CIPs and that we have funded for it. So, that was our suggestion. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, thank you.
And I, I don't want to thank him for that because there is a material difference between our approaches, but we are very willing to continue to work to find a way to make a recommendation that works for, you know, that, that combines those items. And I want to point out to you that the recommendation for seven to ten percent was from 2017. We've gotten a lot more realistic, so maybe it's not seven to ten percent, but it's certainly a recognition. We must find, we recommend, we don't must, we recommend that you find a way to make it very clear in the capital, in the general fund budget, that there are capital things that need to be done and they are separate and identifiable so people can understand them. Otherwise, they just get, you know.
All right, well, we can use the auspices of the Budget Advisory Board to recommend that next budget cycle, and, and, you know, we all look forward to hearing what that would be, but keep in mind that I think some of those CIP projects are already incorporated in the budget, not to the extent that, you know, like sidewalks is a big, is a big number, we all know that.
Yep.
Bridges are a big number, but even the bridges, we, we are able to tap into grant money from other sources. So, I, I think we're, I think the city manager is pretty much aware of the, the need, and he's as frustrated as all of us are that there's never enough money to do all the wonderful things we try to do to make, you know, to continue to be, make Fort Lauderdale the beautiful place that it is. We're getting there. I think that we sat on our hands for a couple of decades and we should have, you know, been doing some of this stuff, you know, as well as I do. So, but a lot of this is now happening because of the robust investment that people are making, the people, you know, all the new construction and the new tax money, the valuation, you know. You know, we took a hit in 2009 and 2010 in terms of our income, but now that it's slowly growing back, you know, we find ourselves, you know, putting some of that for staff increases and staff salary increases, and we also are putting some of that aside for CIP. So I can't ask the city manager right now to tell us what the breakdown is for the increase that we received this year, but I know some of it did go to CIP. So do you want to say something, Roosevelt? Okay. So I think this commission is, does hear you, and is sympathetic to that, and will do our best, you know, in the next cycle to try to make that happen. Yes, Roosevelt?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we go back for a while and the, what I've asked the city manager before this city manager, and...
A couple of, a few city managers ago.
Yeah. And is that when we cancel out a project, a program, add something, where money moves that we may have had used for it in the infrastructure program, I want to see where it came from, and I want to see where it goes. Now, that's the only way that we can be true to all faction of the city, if we can track. You know, I don't want to be like Lotto in education. You know, they tell you how much money they done, that the state have put into education, took it all out of Lotto, they didn't put shit in. I'm sorry. They didn't put nothing in. But I just want to be able to track monies for new projects that wasn't part of the CIP, or we eliminate something that was a part of the CIA, what did we do with the money?
Okay. Got it.
And could I, could I build on that just a moment?
Yeah, go right ahead.
One of the recommendations, communications that we sent you was specifically about that. And it had to do with the bridge, bridges. Bridge, I think it was the Ocean Bridge money was in the CIP, and we were...
South Ocean Bridge.
South Ocean Bridge, thank you. And we were able to switch that over to the surtax funds. Excellent. We saved a lot of money. Where did the money go? It went into the unfunded, what is the, what is that line, that where everything goes to die? I'm sorry. There is a fund where all the money goes when something...
It went to the next, it went to the next project.
Okay. But we don't know where it went to the next project. And we sent you a commission, a communication that said, you were able to find other funds for a bridge project, a transportation project. Why don't we take that money and put it into another transportation project? Not just put it away and get it into the next project where, you know, or the next project or the, it's, as Roosevelt said, it's a question of being able to transparently track where the money goes.
Yeah, I get that. I get it. I understand.
Just the suggestion that we do that.
We'll have to do that. All right. I agree. Where'd it go? Where'd it go, Chris?
It would have gone into another capital project.
Into the next?
But there's no way that you're, you know, if you find one South Ocean Bridge project that's $2.2 million, and I'm using wrong numbers here, but it's not going to translate equally into a different $2.2 million project. It's probably going to...
Be multiple projects.
Spread across multiple projects or become a partial funding source of a larger project.
I guess they just want to know where it went. Yeah. Okay. Do you have anything else on your agenda?
No, I think the, we...
Covered all the main things?
I think we've covered the main things, but I think the most important thing is, what do you want? What do you want from us? What do you need? We've only got about six more months of life, and we haven't dug deep into transportation, because there is no comprehensive transportation plan to dig into. We haven't dug into EMS and that kind of service and what's going on there. There's a number of things that we haven't done, because we spent so much time on, working on water and sewer and stormwater. So there are still a few open items that we haven't really dug deep into. Do you want us to be a resource for you on commenting on large P3 projects, for instance? Do you want us to undertake additional infrastructure needs, like internet and utilities? I mean, there's a whole bunch of questions and sustainability and sea level rise. There's many things that, you know, you might want us to look at, but you need to tell us. We're only looking at what our mission is.
Well, Ralph has a whole list of things.
I want you to read Ralph's list and think about it. You're not going to, we're not going to discuss it, we're not going to solve it today. But we certainly, as a workshop, wanted to put it on the table that, you know, there's only six months left on our, on our mission. If there's something else, different, more you want us to do, or not us necessarily, but another group...
I have a couple of ideas, but I'd like to go from the commission first. Does anyone on the commission have any feedback they'd like to give to the, to the task force committee?
I do. Thank you. Thank you. I'm looking at page two of three in your summary. Thank you for reviewing the P3 for the five ashwater treatment plant. I believe we've had a few more unsolicited proposals come in, so we will get to a point where they have had to, they submit their financials. So I would like your input on that, when we get to the point that we can share it. I know they're closed doored for a certain season, and then you all could look, so that would be helpful to me. And what I, and maybe Chris will give you the timeline for that, but what I want you to look at in particular, I was looking at your appendix six, and it said that you support a P3 as long as the city owns the water rate structure. And I want you to kind of dig into that a little bit more, because it's one thing to own it, it's another when someone tells me how much money they need, and I have to tell taxpayers how much I have to charge them in water. So understand how we can set our own water rate. And I don't think we can, and that's what I'm concerned about. I believe we will get into some kind of an agreement where we are told, this is what I need to operate, and therefore it comes to us, and I just send, you know, go back to my constituents, and I say, this is the rate we have to set in order for you to get water. So just if you all could dive into that a little bit, that would be helpful for me. And, you know, we do have an unsolicited proposal, I don't know if it's public yet for the tunnel. You know, that's a new transportation project, maybe you all could look at that. Is that public yet, Chris?
It's not.
Okay, that's not. So maybe when these things become public, you all could have a meeting to discuss them? Those are just the two P3s, that would be helpful for me.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Marilyn, to the entire task force, thank you so much for all the work you guys do and the hours that you've spent, and I find it really helpful, so thank you. In addition to what the vice mayor stated, I think what we need to do is eventually go back and look at the mission exactly, and see if we think that the mission has been fulfilled. There are other areas, and I think the areas that you mentioned, Marilyn, are really good, that we could, I think, use some guidance and some advisory board-type input on, in terms of the transportation, in terms of all of the issues that Marilyn mentioned. I totally agree. But I want us to be able to look at and say, gee, have we fulfilled that? Have we not fulfilled that? And that'll take a little time, because obviously it's in those resolutions, but that's what I'd like to see us do, just to see if we think that we have fulfilled it. And then, after the next six months, we have to decide if we want to, I think, change that mission.
Ben? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner McKenzie.
I actually don't have a whole lot of input, but I do agree with Commissioner Glassman in terms of what we tasked this task force to do. I think they've fulfilled that. I think now we're reaching, you know, for other topics that we may not, may or may not be able to fulfill in a six-month life shelf, if you will, for lack of a better term. So, and maybe somebody can help me clarify. Once they had completed their first initial task, we kind of wanted them to watch over these bond issues of infrastructure, which is water, sewer, and stormwater. We wanted it to kind of be our eyes and ears. You know, that's what, that's why, what I thought we extended their life for. Not to go in these areas that we were talking about earlier, in terms of a DRC and, you know, other functions. And just correct me if I'm wrong, so if I'm wrong, then I'm okay with that, but I just thought it was just to oversee water, sewer, and stormwater, the bonds that were issued, and not to try to change the policy or anything of that nature. And can somebody help me out with that on staff?
I think that, if I can...
Yeah. Staff, staff.
I did have, I think we did have, Chris, don't, didn't we, we originally had a certain mission statement for them, but it then...
It's been evolving over time. But you're, you're right, Commissioner. That was what, how it was originally born, was, was out of water, wastewater, and stormwater generally. So yes, you are correct.
Yeah. And then we got to a point where we got all that approval, and then we wanted them to stay on board, to just make sure what we were doing with water, sewer, and stormwater stayed on track.
Actually, Commissioner...
Nothing in addition to.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right. What we are doing now is we are monitoring, okay? But we were given a specific task on the development review process. It was very, very specific. So we, we, we did...
So if that's true, I mean, I'm okay with where we went. I just wasn't sure about that part.
Oh, yeah, definitely was. And that, that took a lot of time.
I don't remember it, but if you say it was...
Okay.
Okay. So I agree with Commissioner Glassman, I just think, you know, we keep moving forward, and a good job to the committee. And I don't want to see anything changed with DRC. I like Charlie's suggestion that we have something, and I think Commissioner Marita has hit it too, you know, that there is a map out there, I've seen it, I actually use that map a lot. If we had that information, so we could readily grab it, you know, and use it as we look at projects moving, moving forward. Not something that's going to legally bind us or make us liable for trying to add something to the quasi-judicial process that would get us in trouble, as the city attorney alluded to. So I don't mind having a document out there, but I don't want to change the DRC process or, or anything to do with approving a project.
Okay. Commissioner Sorenson.
Thanks, Mayor. Chris, a couple of questions. When the, you know, a while back, when the contractor directionally bored into our water line and caused massive outage, one of the issues we had with that was trying to turn the valves and redirect the water. So we embarked on mapping all of our valves and the entire system. Where are we in that process?
Well underway, if not working towards complete. I mean, that was one of the projects that was born and part of our consent order as well.
Right.
I'd have to, I'd have to check in with those that are managing that consent order process, unless I turn around and either Victor or Omar would know us, a status on mapping of valves. Yeah, we've got Omar here, who says he can head to the podium and probably answer your...
Okay, that's fine. And then my other question, Chris, is just kind of building on Hayes and Sora reports, and several of those reports are wonderful, they're, you know, several of them are a little bit older. So part of it was also doing a full inventory of our underground infrastructure in terms of getting, trying to get a sense as much as possible, material, character, quality. And I know that's been an ongoing process. Where are we in that, in just in terms of overall completion and evaluation?
I'll see if Omar can give an update there, too. That is part of our consent order process, that Hayes is managing as well. So well underway, but I don't want to, I don't want to guess at a percentage complete.
With the water consent order, Omar Castell, our chief engineer, with the water consent order, we're moving on that right now. There's been some development on that. The second question was your, the wastewater?
The two questions are, where are we with the mapping of the water valves? And then where are we with system mapping?
Yep. Actually, Abby has been more, Abby, you still there?
I don't see Abby on, that's why I went to...
Okay. Abby probably can answer...
Went to phone a friend here in the audience.
I know we have done some of the mapping with the water valves. I believe that is completed, but I'm not 100% sure Abby knows the status of that.
That's, that's all right. Thanks, Omar. And Chris, I just think that would be helpful, just kind of, you know, periodic updates. Hey, here's where we are on the consent order, here's the progression and mapping and so forth.
Both big projects, so they...
Yeah, those are big, yeah.
Going to take a little while to get done, but well underway, if not working towards completion.
But I can get a, I can get a summary where we are on those.
Could you do that? That would be very helpful. Yeah, that'd be great, if possible. And Chris, I forget everything else that was in the consent order, and just like an overall update on that, I think would be great for, for everyone at some point.
Yeah, that's easy. We, we update and have meetings monthly on it, we're just transmitting out the most recent summary.
Okay, perfect. And then Mayor, just again, reiterate what all has been said about the infrastructure task force. I think, thank you, fantastic work. So, Madam Chair, if I'm tracking it right, I mean, we're, I think we're considering today's conversation, I think we're at kind of four of four in terms of big priorities and moving forward. Am I tracking that right?
That would be big priorities.
She said three or four, but...
Three or four, yeah.
No, but I think we completed the fourth today. We got movement.
No, we, this was a very, very good meeting.
The fourth is aspiration.
We were, we were actually, that is true, we were actually very gratified to have this conversation, so that you can give us this information and, and start thinking about what happens post-February. And, you know, it could be, as you suggest, we look at the mission, the mission was accomplished, thank you very much, we all can go home to our families, oh, but you know, there's this and there's that, or the mission isn't accomplished, or we want to add this, and whether it's us or, or other, other people, it's your advisory board. You tell us what we need, what will help you to do your jobs.
And, no, thank you, Marilyn. And Mayor, one other just addition to everything everyone said is like, and again, just an idea to throw in the hopper, is, you know, kind of having the ITF just periodically do a, a physical of the, of the city's infrastructure and just kind of evaluation, working with staff, on a, I don't know, an annual basis, is something that's kind of interesting to me. So I'd just throw that in, and it's another possibility.
I'd like to dig into that comment. One of the things I, I wanted to see, if there was any interest on this commission, was to charge the advisory committee with... I like the advisory committee. I think we, I personally, if you ask me right now, would I agree to, to extend its, its existence, and I would be the first one to say yes, because I think your work has been very helpful. So, so it would be now and after. It's a lawyer's answer.
Good on him.
All right. Any further questions?
Nope.
Comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Huh?